I will now call the March 4th, 2018 Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. If you would stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we be seated? I want to welcome you in attendance, as well as those that might watch the YouTube later on. Next, we have the consent agenda unless there are others need to be pulled, except for motion or approval.
So moved.
Sir's second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a public hearing on the vacation right of way.
Mayor, the city has... I'm sorry.
I'll just finish it up.
Sorry. The city has the following exhibit to enter into the record: staff report, site location maps, vacation map, affidavit of publication in the examiner on February 9, 2019, application with attachments of 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, and 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference, and Bill Number 4637 approving the vacation. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you. Mike, you pay off the city.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. This is a request to vacate the right-of-way for southeast Magellan Drive, which is just on the northwest, or near the northwest corner of US 40 Highway and southeast Adams Street Parkway. The request is being made at the request of Dervet, which is the adjacent property owner to the east. In essence, what the vacation of the right-of-way would do would turn southeast Magellan Drive from a public right-of-way into a private road. The city, as part of the vacation of that right-of-way, would reserve easements for the purposes of utilities, access, cross-access, and that's it, a utility cross-access between the two lots, and a public access easement over that right-of-way area to be vacated. So when right-of-way is vacated, the property is usually split down the middle, and either the property owners on both sides receive their halves respectively. So that's determined by the county, and that's what we expect to happen in this case. However, we are reserving all of the necessary easements to make it still function as a private street and to be able to have utilities in that area. That is all of staff's presentations. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, we have Mr. Johnson.
Your Honor, it's not before you tonight, but I do want to make you aware that the reason this is being requested tonight is because Dervet is in the process of proposing an expansion to their current facility. I may be off on the numbers a little bit, but I believe it's about a 57,000 to 58,000 square foot expansion that would go to the west, and is between $6 and $7 million in new capital improvements to that facility, allowing them to remain in Blue Springs. There is going to be an analysis of a Chapter 100 bond that would provide some level of incentive for that expansion. That isn't before you tonight, but in full disclosure of where this project is headed, I wanted you to be aware of that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Saying none, thank you, Mike. So is there anyone in Dervet here who'd like to speak? Okay, if you'd like to come up, be sworn in.
I do.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Appreciate the time on the agenda. My name is Todd Munsterman. I'm president of Dervet. And Eric, I think you summed it up very well. It's exactly, it's 54,000 square feet on Phase 1, so you're close.
I was hoping to be a little bigger.
Yeah. But hey, we're gonna do a Phase 2, so that'll be another 40,000. We think the street vacation just gives us a lot of flexibility, allows us to maximize our footprint of the facility, it allows us to maximize our parking, which we're currently out of parking, and it gives us some additional truck access to, you know, for trucks in and out of the parking areas, you know, access to docks and that type of thing. So really, those are the main reasons. Appreciate the time, and I'd certainly entertain any questions you might have for me.
Any other questions? Councilman Fowler.
Well, more of a comment, I guess. Before the Parkway was there, you were in another location, and you came and you built on the Parkway, and then you had the facility there now, but also there was another addition between the first...
Correct.
Built on the Parkway and this one, so this is actually gonna be your second addition at that location?
This will be our second addition, correct.
Wow, you just keep building in Blue Springs. That's great.
That's our plan.
Yeah, so, and maybe a Phase 2 on this?
That's the plan.
Wow. Congratulations on your growth.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Well, we certainly look at Dervet as being a fixture. And fixtures don't move, they stay.
Glad to hear that. Glad to hear that.
And we're just happy to see you expanding, so obviously that means the business is growing and doing well for you to be able to do that, then.
Yes, sir.
We're just happy to have you here.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
You bet. Okay, is there anyone who would like to speak in support of? In support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? We'll close this public hearing, and we'd like to introduce.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor. First reading of Bill Number 4637, an ordinance vacating street right-of-way for southeast Magellan Drive between East Walnut Street and the terminus of southeast Magellan Drive at the west boundary of Lots 7 and 8 of Walnut Street Development Center, Second Platte in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri, and reserving utility, cross-access, and ingress egress easements in the area to be vacated.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Sir's second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously. Second reading of Bill Number 4637, an ordinance vacating street right-of-way for southeast Magellan Drive between East Walnut Street and the terminus of second, I'm sorry, southeast Magellan Drive at the west boundary of Lots 7 and 8 of Walnut Street Development Center, Second Platte in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri, and reserving utility, cross-access, and ingress egress easements in the area to be vacated.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Sir's second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4797.
Item 6 and 7 have been withdrawn, so we'll move down to item 8. Public hearing. amended PUD concept plan for Edgewater.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record: staff report with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on February 9, 2019, application with attachments of 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference, and applicant's PowerPoint presentation, staff report, site location maps, rezoning map, affidavit of publication in the examiner on February 9, 2019, application with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference, applicant's PowerPoint presentation, and Bill Number 4639 approving the amended PUD concept plan. And there is a second exhibit, excuse me, that is Exhibit Number 2, email from Murray Bischnett dated February 26, 2019. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, Matt, on behalf of the city.
All right, thank you, Mayor and council. Before you this evening is a request to amend the plan unit development concept plan for the remainder of the Meadows of Chapman Farms and be referred to as Edgewater at Chapman Farms. The subject properties are located west of Southwest 7 Highway, both north and south of southwest Green Meadow Drive. The north property covers approximately 30.9 acres, and the south property covers approximately 7.4 acres. Both properties are currently zoned SF-7 RO with a PUD, single-family plan unit development restricted overlay, which are part of the Chapman Farms PUD, which was first approved in 2004, and later amendment, and later amended in 2006 and 2007. Both of the later amendments did not impact the subject property. A preliminary plat was approved for the Meadows of Chapman Farms in 2005, and a final plat for the first plat was approved in 2007. The applicant, or sorry, the subject property is currently owned by the Blue Springs Land Bank. The applicant Summit Homes is under contract for the property, but is still within their due diligence period, with a condition that they not close on the property until required preliminary approvals for the development have been obtained. Summit Homes is proposing to develop the property with 173 single-family lots and 15 tracts on 38.3 acres, again, to be known as Edgewater at Chapman Farms. The PUD zoning district permits a maximum of five dwelling units per acre in the SF-7 single-family zoning district. The property, the property as proposed is 4.52 dwelling units per acre. The applicant is requesting to amend the PUD concept plan due to the increase in density for the SF-7 zoning district, modifications to the underlying zoning district standards for SF-7, and the changes to the general layout of the site compared to the previous amendment. The current approved density for SF-7 in the Chapman Farms, the overall Chapman Farms PUD is 768 units on 353 acres, which amounts to a little under 2.18 units an acre. What's proposed is an increase of 56 units for 824 units over the 353-acre property, which amounts to 2.33 units an acre, overall, an increase in density for single-family by a little over 7 percent. The applicant is also requesting to establish minimum lot standards that deviate from the underlying SF-7 zoning district. Proposed standards include, and are highlighted in gray on the table above, a minimum lot size of 4,560 square feet from 7,200 square feet, a minimum lot width of 38 feet, a corner side setback decreasing that from 25 feet to 15 feet, and then reducing the side setback from eight feet to six feet. Front setbacks, rear setbacks, building coverage, and building height are not being modified under the request. The proposed subdivision layout does build off of the Meadows' first plat, with street extensions generally north-south, as well as one east-west extension of southwest Willow Way. The development is proposed to be completed in three phases. Street improvements along Cowherd Road would also be made and be required to be approved and completed prior to approval of the second phase. The proposed development does include 9.04 acres of open space, which covers 23.6 percent of the site. This is an increase of more than three acres than what was required on the original PUD for the Meadows of Chapman Farms. There are 15 common space tracts that include one central amenity tract that will include a pool, playground, and other amenities. There will be two buffer tracts that are adjacent to 7 Highway. Additional buffer tracts are also provided along southwest Cowherd Road, as well as 30-foot transition buffer tracts between properties in the Meadows and properties on the north side of the Meadows, existing lots, to provide a transition buffer between the 65 and 70-foot lots to the 38-foot wide lots. The applicant is requesting to remove the required 7-foot landscape buffer adjacent to MF-14 zoning on the south side of the property. In lieu of requiring the 7-foot buffer, they are going, they were requesting to install a 6-foot vinyl privacy fence. A row of evergreens has already been established on the townhouse side of the development at the Orchard of Chapman Farms, and therefore, staff and the applicant do not believe that any additional buffering is needed at that location. The applicant is also requesting to remove a 25-foot required landscape buffer adjacent to county zoning at the northeast corner of the site. In lieu of that buffer, they are requesting, again, to only install the 6-foot vinyl privacy fence. The applicant would also like to request not to be required any fencing in tract I and B, which are adjacent to the service office zoning district along 7 Highway. That typically on fencing requirements where residential butts commercial, the commercial user would install that fence prior to development. The smaller lot subdivision is supported by a centralized amenity, and will include five-foot sidewalks on both sides of all streets, with the exception of southwest Willow Way. The general layout of the subdivision is similar in design and scale to a neo-traditional style neighborhood, which provides a housing type that is not currently available in the community outside of the downtown area. Conceptual front elevations of the proposed housing have been provided. The 38-foot wide lots are generally two-story, single-family homes, and then the 52-foot wide lots, which are on the south side of southwest Green Meadow Drive, are generally a mix of single-story, two-story, and split-level homes. Building materials are primarily lap siding and battening board that create a modern farmhouse look. Although staff is supportive of the overall design, staff does recommend enhancements to the house elevations, including adding transparency at street level, either through front doors and the garage doors. Masonry on the first floor, additional design elements such as shutters, dormers, and greater variation in building materials are recommended. Staff does believe that these enhancements will create added visual interest to each house and enhance the overall neighborhood streetscape, which increases the long-term viability of the neighborhood. Proposed minimum livable floor area for each house is 1,300 square feet, which does match the Meadows' first plat. Building elevations for houses, as well as more details on proposed amenities, landscaping, buffering, and monument signs will be reviewed in greater detail and approved through the PUD final plan. The applicant has also provided some conceptual plans for the community amenity, which includes the pool and clubhouse, the pool and playground, as well as some conceptual plans for the proposed monument signs. These are subject to change with the PUD final plan, and final details will be approved through that process. Staff does believe the proposed development does represent an improvement over what could be accomplished through strict applications of the base zoning district standards and better implement the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and other planning documents. The proposed PUD concept plan allows for the development of smaller-lot, single-family neighborhood with a complete street and sidewalk network, as well as a centralized amenity. The traditional architectural style and house sizes are comparable to the Meadows of Chapman Farms, ensuring that the development blends well with the surrounding area. The proposed development provides a unique housing product, which is supported by the comprehensive plan and the S1 area plan, which covers the Chapman Farms area. One of the place's goal of the comp plan is to integrate housing choices into neighborhoods and corridors, which do include small-lot detached houses, which are generally 35 to 45 feet wide. There were previously three developments that included small-lot detached houses in the area, which included a neo-traditional, single-family style neighborhood in Chapman Farms that was removed in 2007 to accommodate commercial property, which was located south of Mason School Road and east of 7 Highway. There are also two larger-scale developments that were approved but stalled and expired due to the recession. Those developments included the Village of Chapman Farms, which was located at the southeast corner of 7 Highway and Wyatt, as well as Chapman Woods Village at the northwest corner of 7 and Wyatt. Both of those developments included a mix of uses and housing options, which included small-lot detached houses. The recently completed chat report does reference the changing housing market demands and preferences, including increased demand for smaller-lot, single-family homes that are affordable to young families. Staff supports the proposed development due to the overall neighborhood design with a central amenity space, increased open space, the complete pedestrian network, traditional architectural design, proximity to 7 Highway, as well as access to future planned commercial areas. At the Planning Commission's public hearing on February 25th, no one from the public spoke in opposition to the request. The Planning Commission did express interest in greater architectural diversity, including more varied facades, staggering front setbacks, alternating garage sizes, and other design elements to minimize the visual impact of the front-loaded garage. There are also concerns regarding on-street parking. The applicant did point out that there are several areas on corner lots, as well as areas adjacent to green space that can be utilized for on-street parking without conflicting with driveways. A few commissioners had questions and concerns on the side setbacks and the building separations, which would be a minimum of 12 feet between buildings, or six feet for each side yard. Staff did note there are other areas that have the same or smaller setbacks in Blue Springs, including 10-foot separations in downtown, the Primrose Development, Colonial Highlands, Third Platte, and the Villas at Stone Creek all have 10-foot separations between homes. And other developments also, including the Villas at Indigo Hills and Sonora Valley, also have a 12-foot building separation. After the Planning Commission, one resident did submit a letter of opposition to the development due to the increase in density in the Chapman Farms area. Even with the net increase of 56 units for Edgewater at Chapman Farms, the overall Chapman Farms master plan will still have 228 fewer units than was originally approved in 2004, which accounts for a loss of over 16 percent. The number of units has decreased with amendments in 2006 and 2007, with the replacement of 180 units of garden apartments, 64 units of senior apartments, and 61 of the previously mentioned neo-traditional, single-family homes, which were all replaced with commercial zoning and concept plan to accommodate Walmart and Lowe's. Staff does recommend approval of the PUD concept plan with 12 conditions. The Planning Commission also recommended approval of the PUD concept plan by a vote of nine in favor and two opposed. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Matt from the council? Councilman Fowler?
Well, this is more of a question for staff, I guess. This is a plus 56 unit versus, you know, what was in the original PUD concept plan. I know we've ran into situations where, and I think that lot just to the, just to the east there, we've ran into single residences that wanted to join the NID down south, and we tell them no because it doesn't have the capacity. But yet, right now, we're getting ready to do 56 more homes, and I think we've been doing a lot of add-ons throughout the time. So why do we tell some individuals that we don't have the capacity when we keep on adding more homes?
Your Honor, I would like to defer to Chris Sandy, our public works director, regarding the NID capacity.
Mayor and council, after the downturn of the economy, we reassessed the NID and the conservatism in the numbers for it. We were able to add 20 percent to any property that currently had capacity available. So if you had 100 homes, you could go to 120. This has been true of any development that we've looked at since probably 2012.
So I guess you're saying we have a little more capacity now, so if those single residences, if they want to pay a penalty for not being part of the NID for, I don't know, 10, 15 years, could they get back into this and be part of the NID?
Sir, the way the NID is set up, it's its own legal entity, and we do not have the authority to do that. They would have to poll all the members of the NID, from what I understand, and that was easy when there were 12 developers, but now that there are probably close to 600 homes in the NID, it would be difficult to set up an election to do that.
Thank you. If there's any questions?
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay. Lady Matt, developer here, would like to come and speak, be someone in and speak to the issue?
I do. Good evening, Mayor Ross, council members and city staff. My name is Vincent Walker, and I'm with Summit Homes. For those not familiar with Summit, we're a residential developer and home builder, with homes in roughly 20 different communities throughout the Kansas City metro area, including two in Blue Springs. The majority of those are our own exclusive communities, and many of those we've developed as well. I'd like to introduce our team here tonight: Shannon Buster, our engineer from Olson and Associates, and Kyle Jones, a development manager from Summit. As Mr. Wright has introduced, we're here tonight to request your consideration and approval of our newest project in Blue Springs, Edgewater at Chapman Farms. This community will contain 173 single-family homes. As noted on the slide, 50 percent of the homes will back up to green space, enhancing the appearances of the rear yards. The Edgewater community will be governed by a new and independent homes association to ensure adherence to community restrictions. We're excited by this project because it showcases our newest home designs, the Gallery Collection. This slide depicts a streetscape with various elevations. We've had many conversations with city staff, city officials, and many of you, and participated in the community housing assessment team study, and I believe, I believe that was recently presented to this council. We agree with the results and the need for more efficient land use, and homes are more affordable and designed to meet the needs of today's unique household mixes. With the land planning as proposed and architecture designed specifically for this development, we believe this project will help fill a void that exists in the single-family new construction housing market. As many of you are aware, rising construction and land prices have escalated over the past few years, putting new construction entry-level homes out of the reach of many consumers. Families, like many of ours, are often locked out of owning a new home in all its conveniences, such as low maintenance, energy efficiency, open, efficient floor plans, and modern everyday In Blue Springs, the average existing home sales price in the last 18 months is 277,000, and the average single-family new construction price is approximately 320,000. As this slide demonstrates, single-family new construction is virtually non-existent at the 225 to 275,000 price range. This leaves the workforce housing market, or middle-income families, to solely rely on existing aging resale housing stock. But there's simply not enough existing homes to meet this demand. This, in turn, unnecessarily drives up prices even more. Currently, there is less than a one-month supply of single-family resale inventory priced in the 225 to 275 range in Blue Springs, while a healthy housing supply should be between three and four months, according to real estate professionals. Briefly, I'd like to define the term workforce housing and what it means to us and who it encompasses. Simply put, it's housing for the great American middle class. It's housing for our children, who graduate college and come home to Blue Springs to start a family. It's housing for workers with moderate to middle incomes, many who serve our community with pride, including police officers, teachers, firefighters, healthcare workers, municipal workers, tradespeople, manufacturing and service industry employees, all with a desire and sometimes a mandate to live in the city they serve near their workplace. Many of these people represent the future of Blue Springs, both business owners and community leaders. As this slide shows, this group represents over 50 percent of the workforce in Blue Springs. Given the lack of single-family new construction that can serve the buying needs of these sectors, many simply can't find housing for ownership. We all know it is that very ownership that is considered the American dream. It roots people in our city, encourages pride of ownership, and fosters safer communities. As Blue Springs continues to grow, so will the demand for additional workforce housing. This segment of the market cannot be supplied by existing aging housing in the multifamily market only. Other factors that have driven Summit's community design and architecture for this project is the evolving, non-traditional family structure and millennial age group. We've seen a shift away from demand for oversized lots requiring more maintenance among this group, and a move towards connecting and building relationships with neighbors in tighter-knit community structures featuring outdoor spaces and more amenities. The fact is demonstrated by the booming apartment housing market that caters to these groups choices that reflect these changing preferences. Our Gallery Collection at Edgewater will showcase one and a half and two-story site-built homes, offering home buyers three- and four-bedroom layouts with full basements and two-car garages. These homes will be built to the same high-quality standards of every Summit home throughout our community, with exteriors featuring LP smart wood siding and trim, double-pane, insulated glass vinyl windows, 30-year composite roofs, and carrier heating and cooling systems. In addition, Edgewater homes will include wood flooring, quartz, solid-surface countertops, frigid air appliances, and Kohler plumbing fixtures and Shaw flooring. Community amenities at Edgewater will include an open-air clubhouse, community pool with reef deck and children's splash area, a hammock garden, playground area, covered picnic shelter, a two-acre pond, amenity parking lot, and additional six parallel parking spots bordering the amenity site. I'd briefly like to respond to staff recommendations on the need to add design elements for added visual interest. I believe it's important to state that our customers will have options through expanded exterior color palettes, enhanced landscaping, exterior doors with glass options, and four elevations will create a subtle diversity in the architecture. Our research has shown that minimal exterior maintenance is an important driver in the millennials' buying choices, so we were deliberate in the Modern Farmhouse Collection to not include those items that traditionally turn into the highest maintenance. To allow Summit to offer homes in the price points mentioned, we must take into account each item and the value it adds to the home versus the value our buyers place on them. We feel this buying group would rather prioritize money in the interior and in their lifestyle outside of the home. Another important design element is the plat itself that was purposely planned with shorter block lengths and curved bisecting roads to avoid long visual corridors. A topic that was discussed at Planning Commission meeting was the parking dynamics of the community. This slide illustrates approximately 50 available addition parking locations throughout the northern neighborhood section. These areas, along with two-car-wide driveways that are 36-foot deep, and the street parking available in front of every home, provides Edgewater residents with ample parking choices. To wrap up, I'd like to reference the chat study and a specific new direction or recommendation that was made. Through the Development Roundtable, create flexibility in small lot or high-density single-family development without necessarily requiring all of the specific requirements of TNDs. The overarching principles of TNDs, civic life, walkability, connectedness, scale, can be accomplished in other ways. There are many approaches to great environments. Don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. It is our intent to fill the void that exists in the mid-level-priced, single-family new construction market for medium-income families. We request this council's support to make it a reality. I thank the city staff for all their time and meetings to find common solutions to the challenges of this project. We're proud to be able to offer a home and community that will be affordable to the buying groups mentioned while providing first-class amenities and numerous green spaces. Council members, thank you for your time and consideration. Be happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions as a council? Councilman Fowler?
Yes, your honor. The, I guess I'll go with this one since it's already up. I appreciate what staff said about the Planning Commission did request additional, you know, features to kind of, and you've kind of addressed that as well. One of the Planning Commissioners probably was a little bit too tough on this, but I think they kind of said, hey, from the street, it's going to look like we're building garages with side entrances. And I can see that that's not the case, but it's, but I understand where they're coming from, too. Also, the, I guess we could bring up the lots and how they're, yeah, that one that showed all 173 lots. Can we bring up that slide again? Yep, yeah, that was fine. So those look narrow and long, all right? The, I guess about using some of that length of the lot, because the driveways honestly seem pretty short. People have talked about it, you can't really even get two full-sized cars, you know, lengthwise in there. So with the depth of those lots, could, could the setbacks be greater and have a little more driveway?
Well, I mean, with, with the two-car garage and then two, two cars being able to park in the driveway, that allows the possibility for four, four vehicles. So again, in these type of neighbor, in these type of designs, you know, we shorten that, that driveway purposely. So it, it all, it all feeds to the price point we're trying to hit. We don't feel parking's an issue in this case.
Okay. I'm just saying, they're going to have some big backyards, some of them.
Yeah, some of them that back up to some of the common areas, absolutely.
Just on ahead.
Councilman Cato?
Okay, you said the driveway 36 feet, but in that reality, it's only 25 feet because you got 11 feet of easement.
Correct.
So basically, with a 16-foot vehicle, you're really only looking at four or five feet extra to even park a vehicle front and back of it. My concern is, and similar to a neighborhood that I live in, is that between the house, the two houses, you've got 12 feet, correct me if I'm wrong, I just did my quick math and it's my daughter's, it's the math teacher, but 12 feet wide, then you've got approximately five feet where the front door is, correct? That gives it the extra between the driveways, if you're following me. So I only come up with approximately 21 feet. Now, if you go, follow me, if you go have two driveways, you're, you need 24 feet to comply with codes in the city of Blue Springs to park, because you've got an average of 16 feet for a fusion, Ford Fusion, and then you've got four feet to the front side of the driveway and four, four feet to the back. Nowhere in this addition, other than these red spots, and I, I find that a lot of people don't park their, if they have two cars and they have a third one, and they want the one in the driveway, they don't put nothing in the driveway, it goes on the street, just my addition. I, that's what concerns me, is, and then you don't have a, a chance of coming around the corner with the fire apparatus or fire, fire or ambulance getting through. When they park on both sides, I rode within the snowplow, and those guys, I did a tremendous job at dodging cars, it's just, even on a normal with street, is, it takes skill. But I, that's what concerns me, is the parking on it. And I noticed that you got several areas marked in red here on our, our parts marked in red, but I, I just feel like that some, I'm like, I'm Councilor Fowler, I don't know why we couldn't set back a little more to give a little extra in the driveway. And I get where we're coming from, we wanted to shrink the houses down to, to put everything in that perspective, but I, I think, I think it'd be a, a wise decision on my, I think, moving them back and having a little extra driveway to accommodate keeping off-street parking, that's just my thought. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Councilman Evansy, and then I come down on the side.
Can I respond to that? I might just respond that, you know, part of the analysis is looking at the buying group that we're, that we're targeting, and is there outliers that may own four cars, four vehicles? There certainly is. But overall, the, the buying groups probably will be beginning with less cars as, you know, depending on what buying group purchases homes in this area. So yes, there is a dynamic to it, but I don't think that there's not ample parking provided, so.
I'm going to stay on this issue. So is there extra cost associated with extending the driveways and reducing the backyard? Or is it about the same if the setback would be more up front versus the back? I mean, to, to bit, to go off what you're saying, you're saying the, the buying group wants less yard maintenance and maybe parking is an issue, isn't reducing the backyard less yard maintenance and then also fulfills our concerns over parking as well?
Well, if you'll note on, note on the plat that not all, the only, the only extended, deeper lots are the ones that backed.
On the south side there.
Yeah, to some of the common. The rest of them were, were designed specifically for the length within the setbacks that we asked, so there wasn't, there, there's not a lot of room in the, in the rear of these yards that can make up that difference in the driveway.
Okay, so, and then I'm assuming there's some additional cost with concrete or something if there?
Absolutely.
Okay. But you're not concerned about parking? I mean, one, one thing that I think you may not be aware of, we passed an ordinance recently, and you can't park within 10 feet of a mailbox. And so if you're talking 20 feet between house to house, you can't park on the street at all, even if there was space to do it. So there's some legality issues with that as well, that if they do park on the street and neighbors get mad, you're going to create some neighborhood conflict there just by simple issue of the design. If that's something we can solve on the front end, that's why you're getting so much conversation of this.
Sure.
A little bit of pushback, so.
Valid questions.
Just to kind of clue you in to where we're coming from.
Okay.
Well, we're concluded on this side. We will go to this side. We'll start with the lady and come this way.
All right, thank you, your honor. I have a couple of things that I'd like to say about this. First off, when I look at the design, and I understand what you're trying to do, but when I look at the, the photos that you've provided of the different faces of these homes, I see a garage with living quarters above. That's exactly what it looks like. It doesn't look like there's even living on the first main floor. Several years ago, I went to a seminar about good design in, in houses, and it was presented as, well, we don't want to go down the street and say, who lives in that garage? The garage should not be the main focus as you pull down the street. That is of concern to me. Another concern I have, and, and this is something I'm experiencing in my own home, so I can speak to it, and I have more than, a little more than that between our houses, not a whole lot. So my next-door neighbor comes in and puts in a heat pump. That heat pump sounds like a Mack truck idling outside my bedroom. Now, if you decrease the amount of space between those homes and you put your air conditioner or your heat pump in there, how are you going to get around that? And how are you going to control the noise and the things that are created from that particular piece of equipment? Because I hate that thing. It keeps me up at night.
Well, I think part of the design of the homes is to take all of those little items into, into consideration in terms of, you know, there is precedent set for narrower side yard setbacks. So we felt that at six foot, that it allows even for the basements and the egress wells that are, that are required, that we still can, can handle proper drainage in terms of, of where an AC unit may set, you know? It'll be somewhat consistent because a lot of these home plans are, are similar. Again, a couple, two stories, two one-and-a-half story plans. So the two-story plans, you know, the bedrooms will be upstairs. Obviously, the one-and-a-half story will be on the main level. So I think it's really, again, part of the design of not locating those where it, it could interfere with, with a neighbor or so.
Well, how far out from your basement window?
Let's go back to the picture so we can look at those.
Sure.
So we can kind of see.
Want to go to the streetscape?
Yeah, right.
So how far out from the foundation does the window well go? I mean, that's a couple feet, I mean, it's got to be for ingress egress, so it's got to be.
Yeah, the exact projection.
Wide enough for somebody to get it out of there. And if you only have five feet or six feet, and you're taking three or more, I don't know, I've never measured a window well, I don't have one, but that's coming out towards the property line.
Uh-huh.
I, I'm just trying to visualize how we're going to, number one, have maintenance and run mowers and stuff through there, and you're, like I said, the air conditioning units. I have some very big concerns about that lack of space between the homes, as well as looking at these, I don't, I'm concerned that they look like a, a first-floor garage and a second-floor living space. Because they all, to me, when I look at this, they look the same. I see one has a peak here, one has a peak here, but you look at them, they're all the same. So I have some concerns with that.
Okay. Part of what we were striving to do was consistency in the architecture, because again, we're, we feel we're, we're catering towards a buying group that they're not looking for the flashiest of exteriors, they're not looking for all the bells and whistles that go, that go with, with some of the traditional housing that's out there. I would ask that, are you all having problems with grading on the lots in downtown Lee Summit in terms of the narrow, the narrow lots between the homes?
Mid and Tampa Blue Springs?
Yeah, or, or some of the other that Matt had mentioned earlier. Because in, in, in the communities we've seen, you know, there's ample, there's ample opportunity for mowers to get through, there's still yards to grade, but again, it's not, we're not trying to have too much of anything. We want, we want just the essentials on the exterior that allows for that reduced maintenance. So I don't know if that's the talking point or not.
Councilman Evanson, do you have anything to add?
If I may, your honor.
Yeah, coming right on down.
Okay, thank you. Some of my concerns has already been answered by staff. Capacity was one of the main ones. I know we've worried about that, it has been brought up, as you were here before once with, with a project, we're always concerned about what we propose and what comes in, but staff has assured us that, that we're well within the range of that. It has been mentioned about parking and about the mailboxes, I don't know, maybe you could consider doing, grouping the mailboxes into clusters and periodically placing them down, and that helps alleviate some of that problem. Post office would probably like us having that, saves on some of that. So just, just throwing that out. You mentioned downtown. We've had some pretty good success with the downtown projects, doing close density, less setback in between, you know, five-foot setbacks. It's a look, I think it's a future of some of the stuff we have. There's other projects throughout the metro area that are doing similar to this. Not that I'm a real fan of it, but it is something that we need to address and, and attract more people to Blue Springs. So in some aspects, you know, if you could dress it up to make it a little bit different, but it's a plan that I think may, might, might make a go of it out here. That's my comment.
Councilman Carr? Well, you saw the chat study, and you're clearly responding to the chat study, and I would just point out that the demographic that is asking you questions is not the demographic that you're going after. It's not us. It's the new demographic that's coming up. I guess my question would be, first of all, you mentioned that this product is not available in Blue Springs right now. Would serve 61 percent of the buying public? Did I get that right?
50 percent of the workforce falls within what we're considering the buying demographic for this.
Yeah. So do you have this product in other cities, and how is it doing?
Currently, not yet, no.
Okay.
There's other, there's other similar communities throughout the country that we've looked to and looked for the pros and the cons that's modeled, that's been very successful. But none, other than the traditional TND-type projects that are similar to this, you know, in some cases, they are catering to the same buying demographic, but unfortunately, most of the time, it misses the mark because the, the price points get too high. Again, when you, when you add a rear alley, that's just, that's just more expense up front, and then it's also additional expense down the road to the upkeep. So, you know, you can point to the Longview area in Lee Summit, but again, you know, those homes, gosh, those things can range up to 500,000. So in terms of the size, in terms of the density, absolutely, there's success stories.
Well, you know, one of the things that we pointed out in that chat study is a lack of diversity of housing in Blue Springs. I'm a big supporter that we look at diversity so that we serve all the demographics who are buying.
Right. Right.
So, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess coming down the line brings it to me. Okay, I'm not sure that I heard anyone say, this subdivision will be maintenance-free?
No.
So, every one of these homeowners got to have their own line mower to go out there and do their mowing and-
Potentially, yes. I mean, could the area go to a low maintenance somewhere down the road within, you know, the Homes Association? Absolutely, that's something that the residents could look at. If we get this outpouring of interest, certainly, it's something that we would look at, but the intent is no.
So, we'll have homeowners association because our city requires you to have a homeowners-
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
So, you're saying, as a developer, it won't be your decision whether you want to go maintenance-free? It will be the, once you give the authority to the homeowners association-
It's always an option to them, correct.
Okay.
And Your Honor, the Home Association, they will maintain that storm detention pond?
Yes, sir.
The city's not going to take that over, right?
No, 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 I'm sorry, yeah.
Well, if I'm looking at it, I think there are two demographics, I think, that there might be an appetite for something like this. Certainly, the millennials, but also the senior citizens. But I think the citizen seniors would like to also have a component of maintenance-free because they don't want to be out running line mower or shoveling snow. So, I think to get the attraction of that particular demographic, it almost has to be a maintenance-free.
That's a great point, absolutely.
Your Honor, I would say that for senior citizens, they're not going to want all the bedrooms up on the second level.
No, they're going to want the-
They're going to want ranch.
And I might point out to councilmember that there will be one and a half story plans as well, which puts the master on the main level. So, that does give an option to an empty nester, and that was purposeful.
Anyone else? Councilman Fowler?
This may be more for staff, and I realize this is, we're at the concept stage, but just for the trees in this rendering here, they're between the sidewalk and the curb. Do we do that on new construction?
We only allow that if Public Works allows that, and typically, they have not. So, the trees as shown there would need to be back on the backside of the sidewalk.
All right. Fine.
Good eye. Okay. All right, so, do you have any more questions of the developer or staff? If not, we'll go to the public. Is there anyone in order to like to speak in support of? Support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? Closest public hearing. Who would like to introduce bill number 4639?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor. First reading of bill number 4639, an ordinance approving the amended planned unit development concept plan for Edgewater at Chapman Farms.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
The second.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Councilman Levisay.
Yes, Your Honor.
Aye.
Yeah, this is, I think, a lot of the things that Planning Commissioners brought up, a
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, second reading of bill number 4640, an ordinance accepting
lot of things we had tonight, it's challenging from, I guess there's trade-offs with everything.
the conveyance of general warranty deeds for right-of-way from Allen A. and Barbara Swearingen and DPPR LLC, and a temporary easement from DPPR LLC for property located on the
I understand that, you know, the millennials, if this is what they want, then that's what they need to come up and buy it, so I'm going to support it, but I just know that it's,
south side of US 40 Highway and 1,500 feet east of southeast Adams Dairy Parkway.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second. I do agree with a lot of things the Planning Commission has said.
The second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Discussion. Anyone else? Roll call.
Councilman Levisay.
CNN, Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
I'm like Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
I will support it, but I would like to see, number one, the mailbox being in a cluster
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
area, and that would be a major help, I believe, in trying to look at some different ideas
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4800.
on going that way. Thank you.
What else? Okay, next we're going to go to Ms. Cates for an introduction on the presentation CNN roll call, please.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
of our site annual audit report.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Yes, we have Kristen Hughes, Senior Manager for RSM, presenting the results of our fiscal
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
year 2018 audit.
Aye.
You're welcome.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Good evening.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4798.
Let's see, who am I to, thank you.
Next we have introduction reading of bill 4640.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number 4640, an ordinance correcting a scriptener's error in the legal
Great, just, oh, perfect, thank you.
description included in ordinance number 4793.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
All right, thank you, good evening.
The second.
Second.
This evening, I'm going to go through a summary of the audit and then the deliverables that
Discussion. Roll call.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Councilman Levisay.
you've been provided a copy of.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
So, starting in the PowerPoint presentation, as a reminder, you've received a copy of
Aye.
the city's comprehensive annual financial report, your CAFER, as well as required communications with city officials, which I'll start with, and that's really a summary of the audit itself. So, going through, here are the topics. There are certain required communications that at the conclusion of an audit, we go through city officials with. So, the first item I would note, and this will actually be found in the CAFER, but we did issue an unmodified or clean audit opinion on the CAFER, meaning the financials are materially presented in accordance with GAAP as required to be. Another item we'd like to highlight is anytime the city adopts a new accounting standard, if that changes either how something has been accounted for or how it's disclosed in the financials. So, this year, the city did implement GASB statement number 75, which relates to other post-employment benefits, so health benefits offered to retirees. What this did was, it was a change similar to the pension standards that were implemented a few years ago, just meaning that the city shows on its financials a liability for long-term costs that actuaries have estimated for the city as far as cost for retirees on the plan. So, I've noted here, there are disclosures that the city has added as required that talk about the plan, the dollar amounts, the city's liability this year, just so you know, it was not a significant impact on the financials. The liability at year-end was approximately $600,000, as estimated by the actuary. So, not a hugely significant number for the city, but as I mentioned, management has implemented that in accordance with the standard and the required disclosures about the plan. As far as management judgments and accounting estimates, this is just to remind you that as a part of the audit, we take a look at areas in the financials, whether it's balances or transactions throughout the year, that have a component of subjectivity or an area where management is performing an estimate. And, you know, an example is depreciable lives of capital assets. The city has adopted a policy, so one thing we're taking a look at is that that policy is being followed. But again, that's an estimate, management's estimating how long the city's capital assets are going to last, and therefore, how long they should be depreciated over. So, we take a look and make sure, again, that they're following the policy and that those estimates seem consistent with what we would expect to see in other municipalities and noted no issues. Audit adjustments, there were none. That's always something positive to be able to report, and what this again means is that the trial balance, the financials we were initially provided with when we started the audit are consistent with what you see in the final issued financials, you know, meaning we didn't identify any significant errors or changes that needed to be made in the funds themselves. There was one uncorrected immaterial misstatement, so again, I would note there, it's immaterial, so it was not reflected in the financials. Just one item noted, an understatement of accounts payable, really just a timing issue, a payment on an invoice that related to fiscal year 18, went through fiscal year 19 instead, but it's immaterial. Again, if there was any significant, you know, issues that came up, we are required to communicate those to you, disagreements with management, problems getting information. There were no issues or concerns in that area, as always. You know, we primarily work with the finance department, but are also getting the opportunity to work with other departments and getting information. And just so you know, I mean, everybody has always been very helpful as far as responding to our requests in a timely manner so that we can complete our audit. Future accounting pronouncements, so this is looking ahead. Footnote 12, just so you know, goes through accounting pronouncements the city has not yet implemented, but may have an impact on the financials in future years. So, you can see those disclosed in the footnote and the years that they'll go into effect. And the last item, you know, as a reminder, in an audit, we do not give an opinion on internal controls, but we do have a reporting obligation under government auditing standards that if we become aware of any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies as it relates to internal controls over reporting, that those would be communicated to you. There were none, so you'll see the standard letter in the document that just provides the definition of those and confirms that none were noted during our audit work. Before I jump into a couple summaries that have been noted here, you know, the comprehensive annual financial report is a large document. A couple areas I like to just highlight, as I mentioned, you'll see the clean audit opinion in there. The city has also received the GFOA certificate for last year's, the 2017 CAFER that was submitted, so you'll see their certificate of excellence in this year's CAFER. And I know the CAFER will be submitted again for review in the 2018 report. The front also includes management's discussion and analysis, so again, that's a year-over-year comparison, really looking at 2018 compared to 2017. So, I always suggest taking a look at that for maybe a shorter read if you need to, but it's where management goes through and analyzes for your key and your major funds, why financial results were different in the current year compared to prior year, you know, why revenues or expenditures went up and down in each of the funds. You have your basic financials, and then the footnotes that go into a lot of detail on areas such as investments the city holds, debt, capital assets, your pension plan that you participate in loggers, the OPEB plan, tax abatements. And then at the back, there's the statistical section. It's an unaudited area, but it provides on several key topic areas such as revenue sources, debt, demographic operating information. Most of them are a 10-year presentation, either 10 consecutive years, or some of them show you current year information compared to 10 years ago. So, I point people there just because it can provide a good trend analysis as far as, again, how your revenue collections in property taxes, sales tax, et cetera, compare this year compared to how they did 10 years ago. So, taking a look at just a few areas we've highlighted here, revenue by type, and this is specific to the general fund, which again, is the city's operating fund. Looking at total revenue this year compared to prior year, you'll see there in the bottom right, revenue in the general fund in the current year went up about 1.5 million or 6%. Looking at the chart there, you can see the primary area of the increase was in your tax revenue, I believe specifically in sales tax, property tax, and some franchise tax areas saw increased revenues this year. And then you'll see most of the other areas were pretty consistent year-over-year. Next, expenditures by function in the general fund again. You'll see expenditures stayed pretty consistent compared to the prior year. I believe it was roughly a $700,000 increase in 2018 or 3% compared to prior year. And in looking at the chart, you'll see most of the areas were in public safety function as well as highways and streets. So, those are the two areas that saw increased expenditure activity in the current year. Fund balance by category in the general fund, so again, fund balance is the term for really equity in the general fund. So, of the amount you have sitting in fund balance or equity, how it's distributed. So, non-spendable, the blue at the top, that represents if you have prepaid or if the general fund has made an advance to another fund, those don't necessarily generate really liquid assets for the general fund. Your largest category is the committed, so to qualify as committed means it's been approved or earmarked by city council. So, most of this, the city has approximately 7.5 million between both the emergency reserve that's been established as well as the budget stabilization reserve. So, that's where most of the general fund's balance sits, is those two policies that have been approved by the city. Legal debt margin, this is just to show, so by state statute, you, the assessed value, you have a debt limit of 20% of that amount. So, you can see there's a large, as far as the assessed value is approximately 850 million a year-end, so the debt limit in yellow would be 20% of that or 170 million. So, then if you take a look at that, that's just so you can see, if you compare what your really allowed legal debt margin is compared to what kind of debt has been issued as far as geo-debt, that, you know, the city has a very large balance or capacity there. Operating results for the enterprise funds, so again, the enterprise funds are going to be your primary two are the water and sewer funds, and then you also have the golf fund and the fieldhouse. So, these are funds that operate more under a business-type perspective. So, that's why we show these stats as far as operating revenues, expenses, depreciation expense. We show that just because it's a non-cash expenditure. It's significant, but it's non-cash. So, there in red, we've presented net income but excluding that cost, since it's not really a cash going out of the fund. So, you'll see operating revenue again increased in the current year primarily as a result of, I believe it was a three-year water and sewer rate increase that was approved each year, so you see that obviously having a direct impact on the operating revenue going up each year. Expenses went up as well, not as much as the operating revenue that was generated. And then the cash flows from operations, these funds do also present a cash flow statement similar to private companies, so there you can see just that those all do have positive balances as far as cash being generated by the operations themselves. And that's it. I know that was pretty high level. I'm happy to go through any questions you have, though, on either the financials or the audit itself.
Was there any question from the council? Councilman Fowler?
Yes, if we could get, well, you have it up there, but page 120 of the report, I know we have it electronically in our packet, and we've got it also here as well. I guess what I like about the capers, it is, you're exactly right, it's a big 10-year vision of where you've been, where you're going. And also, you go out to our website, and you can see ours and prior years, also, you can go to neighboring cities. It puts us all on a level playing field. And so, I always appreciate that. A number of years ago, I was, for a period of four or five years, I was very much on top of our debt and watched it rise from single digits, if we had page 120 up, we'd see it here, years ago, and then we were actually climbing quite a bit at a pace beyond where Lee Summit was at. And it was, to me, it was heading in the wrong direction. I know we can always borrow more, but I thought we had enough debt, and certainly compared to our history. Good to note here, though, since 2013, every year since then, that debt percentage has gone down. And so, I think that's a great direction for our city, and good to see that. I know staff has put a lot of work behind that. Love to see it get down to single digits again, but, you know, it's definitely heading the right way for six consecutive years, so thank you.
Thank you for those comments.
Yep, yep. Okay, that's fine.
All right, anybody else? If not, thank you.
The only thing I'd like to say, Your Honor, is, and I know Ms. Van Winkle and her staff do a phenomenal job, and I say the same thing year after year because we, year after year, get a clean audit. And I know it's-
would be 20% of that or 170 million. So, then, if you take a look at that, that's just so you can see if you compare what your really allowed legal debt margin is compared to what kind of debt has been issued as far as GO debt, that, you know, the city has a very large balance or capacity there. Operating results for the enterprise fund. So, again, the enterprise funds are going to be your primary two are the water and sewer funds, and then you also have the golf fund and the field house. So, these are funds that operate more under a business-type perspective. So, that's why we show these stats as far as operating revenues, expenses, depreciation expense. We show that just because it's a non-cash expenditure. It's significant, but it's non-cash. So, there in red, we've presented net income but excluding that cost since it's not really a cash going out of the fund. So, you'll see operating revenue, again, increased in the current year primarily as a result of, I believe it was a three-year water and sewer rate increase that was approved each year. So, you see that obviously having a direct impact on the operating revenue going up each year. Expenses went up as well, not as much as the operating revenue that was generated. And then, the cash flows from operations, these funds do also present a cash flow statement similar to private companies. So, there you can see just that those all do have positive balances as far as cash being generated by the operations themselves. And that's it. I know that was pretty high level. I'm happy to go through any questions you have, though, on either the financials or the audit itself.
Was there any question from the council? Councilman Fowler.
Yes. If we could get up, well, you have it up there, but page 120 of the report. I know we have it electronically in our packet, and we've got it also here as well. I guess what I like about the capers, it is, you're exactly right, it's a big ten-year vision of where you've been, where you're going. And also, you go out to our website and you can see ours and prior years. Also, you can go to neighboring cities. It puts us all on a level playing field. And so, I always appreciate that. A number of years ago, I was, for a period of four or five years, I was very much on top of our debt and watched it rise from single digits. If we had page 120 up, we'd see it here, years ago. And then, we were actually climbing quite a bit at a pace beyond where Lee Summit was at. And it was, to me, it was heading in the wrong direction. I know we can always borrow more, but I thought we had enough debt and certainly compared to our history. Good to note here, though, since 2013, every year since then, that debt percentage has gone down. And so, I think that's a great direction for our city, and good to see that. I know staff has put a lot of work behind that. Love to see it get down to single digits again, but, you know, it's definitely heading the right way for six consecutive years. So, thank you.
Thank you for those comments.
Yep, yep. Okay, that's fine.
All right. Anybody else? If not, thank you.
The other thing I'd like to say, Your Honors, and I know Ms. Van Winkle and her staff do a phenomenal job, and I say the same thing year after year because we, year after year, get a clean audit. And I know it's not easy. I've gone through that my whole life, and I just want to commend you and your staff for doing a phenomenal job every year. Thank you.
Yes.
Ditto. Took your line. I want to tell you, I remember an audit years ago, perhaps 1999 or 2000, in which we had, I believe the number is correct, nineteen findings. It was not a pleasant process.
Wow.
And that was before Ms. Cates was here. And ever since that time, we have been, I believe, moving the organization in the right, absolutely in the right direction. We have a phenomenal finance team through Christine and Karen and the rest of the employees who support that. So, thank you, and no pressure. Keep it up.
Well, I merit it by getting that GFOA award every year. So, we can expect another one, right?
I think so.
And that's number twenty-something?
Mm-hmm. Getting close to thirty, I think.
Thirty?
Yeah.
All right. Well, we're on the move and on the right track. Thank you so much for that report.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the next presentation. Ms. Marjorie Major with the Human Relations Commission. She's the chair, and we're going to have you come forward. Now, where's all your members? Couldn't get them out in this cold tonight?
Can I do it from here? No, I guess not. They're all in their homes being warmed, I guess. Well, good evening. I'm Marjorie Major, and I am the chairperson of the Human Relations Commission. This evening, I'll review the commission's report from last year.
You have a PowerPoint?
I do.
We need to cue that up, somebody.
Would you rather have her at the other podium, Mayor?
Just kind of, yeah, if you want to, if you want to go there so you can. Yeah, drive it.
Our city is a community that encourages deep commitment to the range of human differences, which we know as diversity, and to where the natural worth and dignity of all people are recognized, inclusion. I'll share just a bit of HRC's background. In 2013, Mayor Ross, Blue Springs Farmer Chief of Police, Wayne McCoy, former Lee Summit HRC Chair, Dr. Emmanuel Gumsey, and Blue Springs City Council drafted a charter for the establishment of the HRC. The first official meeting was held in June of 2014. During that first year, the commissioners participated in strategic planning, and they also identified the activities that they would take part in, along with a vision statement. Blue Springs will be an inclusive community where all persons are accepted and valued. Get this together.
Do we need to drive that thing on some more? There we go.
There we go. Currently, there are seven members of our commission, and currently, our commissioners are Jane Bowerman, Vice Chair, Gino Boigno, Leonard Hughes, Susan McDaniel-Wiggins, Courtney McGinnis, Shawna Squire, and then, we have two student reps. We have one vacancy right now, but Quinn Evans is our student rep from Blue Springs High School. We also have city liaisons, Captain Jim Snyder from the Police Department, and Jerry Kayler from the City Council. We also have a city staff person, and that's Jenna Herring. She serves as our recording secretary. Our mission statement is, our mission statement is to foster the improvement of human relations among our citizens of all cultural backgrounds, and to provide all individuals with an equal opportunity to grow and to participate in our economic, educational, political, and social systems. We do this through open, honest, and respectful communications with our community. For the sake of time, I'll highlight a few of our 2018 activities. As you can see on the screen, we had a pretty busy year in 2018. We started off with the SPIRIT Initiative, which is an acronym for Site Problem Identification and Resolution of Issues Together. At this event, where the HRC actually partnered with the Department of Justice to have a day-long session that was designed to empower the more than fifty community leaders in attendance. They were there to recognize issues within our city and to create resolutions that could be implemented to address these issues. There were three action items that were identified that day. Those three items were, and you've probably heard some of this because we made our presentation in November of last year, but those items were to develop multiple ways to communicate with our diverse community, review city ordinances with the goal of limiting the volume of specific predatory business types, and lastly, to explore the creation of a not-for-profit center with centralized resources that will enhance the quality of life. Twelve community members actually volunteered that day to be part of a newly-formed Blue Springs SPIRIT Council. The council worked throughout the year with the HRC to develop an action plan. And as I mentioned, the SPIRIT Council did make those recommendations before the city council in November of last year. Also, we had our third annual activity that we call Helping Residents Connect, and the acronym, again, HRC. We held that in November, I think it was November 4th, and it was on a Sunday. That was held at Vesper Hall, and this, last year, we had more vendors than had attended in previous years. We actually had about twenty vendors from the Blue Springs Business Community. It wasn't attended as well as we would like for it to have been. We did have Facebook. We also did billboards and had flyers. But, the one thing we did not plan for was that the Chiefs were playing that Sunday. So, I think a lot of our attendants stayed at home again to watch the game. Also, in November, I participated in the Metropolitan Human Relations Regional Summit. The cities in the Kansas City metro area all meet each year to just share insights on what we're doing in our commissions in our cities, and to listen to what a lot of the hard work and dedication that the commissions are doing in their communities. Present in 2018 were representatives from Olahtha, Johnson County, the United Government of Wyandotte County, and Kansas City, Kansas, Independence, Raytown, Lee Summit, Overland Park, and of course, Blue Springs was there. Additionally, the HRC participated in and enjoyed many of our local events. We participated in the annual Martin Luther King Celebration. We had block parties. We attended the Fall Fun Fest and was able to talk to our residents and community members there, and then also the National Night Out. Some of our brochures that we had during the summer, I mean, during the last year, our block parties. We held our block party at Chapel Ridge, that is Moreland School Road, right at Seven Highway. This year, we planned, which we already have, participated in the Martin Luther King Celebration, and that was at First Christian Church as it is each year. One of our large endeavors we're taking this year, as I said, our commission was started in 2014. It's been five years since the strategic plan was done. So, this year, we, this year, we look to renew our strategic plan. We've already had one meeting that was on the 23rd of last month, of last month. And in our strategic plan, we want to identify long-term goals that will include one-year objectives, and they will advance our HRC SMART goals, which means to be specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and time-based. This year, again, we will take part in many of our local activities, such as the neighborhood block parties, again, the Fall Fun Fest, Helping Residents Connect, the National Night Out, and then also, we are geared to be, to provide assistance to the city council in the implementation of any of the recommendations that the SPIRIT Council has made. I'll take any questions at this time.
Any question? Councilman Edmondson.
If I may, on your Helping Residents Connect Fair, I know I've attended all of those, and I know numerous other people up here have too. I was just wondering if it might be better to schedule that during the summer, maybe in conjunction with our concerts in the park, where you have a readily-available audience already gathered there, that maybe you could help generate more foot traffic through and help that fair grow. Just a suggestion from myself.
Fine. Thank you for that suggestion.
Anyone else? CNN, thank you for the presentation. I can tell you that I was in another jurisdiction last week at a luncheon, and a person was telling me about an issue that they had, and they actually brought up the HRC and said the HRC was very helpful to them. So, anyway, thank you for that, and also thank the other members of the commission that chose to sit by the fireplace tonight and not come out in this weather. Okay, that brings us, no, we have an introduction and reading of bill forty-six forty-two.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
All right.
First reading of bill number forty-six forty-two, an ordinance approving a contract for legal services with Williams and Campo, PC.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
The second. Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think there's any concern up here. I just wanted to say, I've got some experience with Paul Campo. He's on the MML Board, and he does good work, and he's a great legal mind to be trusted, so I think we're in good hands with this.
He does.
And the small cell issue. Do you disagree? The small cell issue is one we've been dealing with, and I think it's as good for us to get involved at this level, so.
Yeah, he's very quiet, but he's a good legal man.
He's a good guy.
Yes.
Just to clarify, this will be a member of Paul's team.
Right.
Paul himself won't be handling this work, but part of the same team.
Right.
But we will hold him accountable. Where are we? All in favor, aye?
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levesque.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Councilman Carter's tired. I'm trying to.
Second reading of bill number forty-six forty-two, an ordinance approving a contract for legal services with Williams and Campo, PC.
I'm going to rally here. Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Yeah. All right. Roll call, please.
Councilman Edmondson.
Yes.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levesque.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number forty-eight oh-one.
Okay, that brings the merril announcements. We're going to go straight to, well, if you recall, the month of February is considered Black History Month, and we had quotes from notable African-Americans, and the month of March is recognized as Women History Month. And so, we're going to have quotes from notable females or women. Tonight's quote is, "Knowing what must be done does away with fear." Rosa Parks, in quote. Okay. I don't have any visitors' appearance forms, so I'd accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
The second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levesque.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
We adjourn.